Are we ready? Okay, the study session, CMCSS School Board Study Session for March 12, 2024 is now in order. First item on the agenda, FY 24 March Budget Amendments, Dr. Luna.
Yes, I'd like to call CFO Chris Renaud up for the March Budget Amendments.
As I go over the budget amendments, just a few things I want to point out. Just as a point of reference, this is typically the first time of the year where you'll see a lot of payroll adjustments because this is where we start churning up payrolls based on forecasts for the rest of the year to make sure that we don't have any of our accounts in the negative balance. So just wanted to classify that here before we get started. So first one we're going to go over is general purpose. What you're going to see is an increase in revenue of 513, approximately $513,000. That's primarily driven by, we are forecasting an increase in local option sales tax of about $1 million, but we did have a reduction in grants of about $488,000, but I'll touch on those on future slides. Overall increase to expenses are total about $1.9 million. The primary breakout of that is payroll reconciliations, which I mentioned earlier, of half a million dollars. Some increased costs in furniture and additional furniture to set us up for fiscal year 25 when school starts. We did have some benefit reconciliations, which include medical, social security, and as well as retirement true-ups that you'll see that come in at $429,000. We did see an increase in insurance premiums, both for OJI and liability. And there was an executive order tied to the OJI insurance increase for $150,000, but we're forecasting additional $150,000 needed for the rest of this year. There was some increased costs on maintenance expense. We do have associated architecture expense with the St. B redesign for the Early Learning Center. We do have an increase of about $100,000 for staffing expense. Other miscellaneous funds that'll go over through your packets, $52,000. There were some favorable variances on transfers for $9,000. And then again, you're going to see a lot of reduction. Obviously, we lose revenue associated with grants. We have to offset that with a reduction in expenses, so you'll see in the future slides. So going over revenue, here you see the $1 million increase that we're focusing, we're forecasting on local option sales tax. And then here you see the grants that have been reduced. We did have a reduction in innovative school model grants of $165,000. And then the big one that you see is our high cost reimbursements. That's an allocation from the state and the state ran out of funding. So they reduced our grant money associated with high cost reimbursement by $319,000 or approximately 80%. Overall, you see a net increase of revenues of $512,000. So again, no changes in reserves. We still have, our fund balance still exceeds the state requirements. So again, increase in revenue of about $512,000. So on the expense side, again, you see some payroll projections. And again, I think I've mentioned this before, anytime I have payroll projections, you'll see associated costs with benefits that increase as well as payroll increases. So you'll see the benefit increase followed below payroll projections. So under alternative schools, there's some minor payroll projection adjustments, associated benefits. Oh, and just to highlight some things that might influence this, we have people working overtime or we may have hired, we may have budgeted a position at a lower rate and someone came in with more background and experience, so they came in at a higher compensation rate. So that's what also drives your payroll projection increases as well. Special education, you see payroll projections and associated benefits. And then you see all the reductions in expenses based on the high cost reimbursement grant that we had a reduction in as well, so. Vocational, you see some adjustments for innovative school models and it's primarily just moving monies to different accounts and allocations and the reduction as well that we had in that grant funding. And then we had some people, we had an individual take, that we did not forecast to take our medical, take advantage of our medical benefits program, and they did. So we're incorporating that as a future payout for this year. Under Student Services, Minor Payroll Projection Adjustments, Associated Benefits. Under Health Services, Payroll Projections and Associated Benefits. Other Student Support, Payroll Projections. And then we did move, move a large portion of money from contracted services to supplies for, to cover some of our funding for our public school grant. Under Regular Instruction Support, Payroll Projections. We did have significant members take advantage of our medical program. So as y'all know, we cover not 75% of the premiums on the medical, so that drove those costs up there. And then we had some slightly movements, increase in travel cost allocations, and then again, moving some money around to different funds for different uses. Under Special Education Support, Payroll Projection Adjustments, Associated Benefits and Medical Costs. And then again, a reduction in high cost reimbursement as a result of the reduction in grant revenue. Vocational Payroll Projections and as well some innovative school funding increase and then benefits and medical production, projections. Technology, the majority payroll projection, Associated Benefits. And then we did have a reduction in innovative school models. So that's where we offset that reduction in revenue with this expense reduction in supplies and materials. Adult Education, very small payroll projections, Associated Benefits. Same thing for Board of Education. And here you see the increase in our on-the-job injury cost as we're forecasting an increase in those costs based on current projections and our liability claims. So there you see an increase in expenses of $375,000. Minor and Director of Schools account. Printing and Communication, we just had minor payroll projections and then benefits. And then we did move some money from supplies and equipment to supplies and materials from equipment and staff development. So those are offset. Office of the Principals, Payroll Projection. And then we did add an additional resource to support the building up of the Early Learning Center. So you see the costs associated with that and the benefits of individuals taking advantage of our medical program. Business Affairs, you see some payroll projections. We do have some staffing that we're trying to backfill for some personnel that are retiring, benefits. And then we did have an increase in our actuarial where we forecast our costs. So you can see those costs associated of about $1,100. Under Human Resources, Payroll Projections, Benefits and Medical. And then we moved some money from equipment, from equipment to cover contracted services and supplies and material. Operation of the Plant, you see the largest one is for St. B Architecture Design. And then again, we're forecasting some additional furniture costs associated with our, with our schools, so. Maintenance of Plants, we have seen some increase in maintenance supplies required. And then we've offset some of that as well with some movement from contracted services. Early Childhood, Payroll Projections and Associated Benefits. No changes to the rest of the accounts as far as debt service. Overall, you see a net reduction in fund balance of $1.3 million. That's offset by the 512 in revenue. But again, our fund balance still exceeds minimum state requirements. Any questions on general purpose? All right, Child Nutrition, just go over, we did have some increase in revenue of about $1.3 million. That's primarily through, we were awarded a Supply Chain Assistance Grant by the USDA. So that's going, that's going to contribute to our revenue increase, that's the majority of it. We did get some estimated increase from USDA on our commodities as well. We do have slight expense increase, primarily $305,000 for supplies and materials. You know, the USDA has given us more money because they're anticipating it's costing us, and they were right. So we're forecasting an increase in cost to offset that, that additional funds we got from USDA. But again, fund balance is still above minimum state threshold. Any questions on child nutrition? All right, Transportation, we just have a small movement here. We took out $20,000 from athletic travel to use for the acquisition of our huddle camera system associated with our athletics. So it's just an offset from transportation to equipment. And then we had some increase in supply costs. But overall, fund balance is still above minimum state requirement. Extended School, this is the budget we set up for our summer learning programs. And again, this is a forecast, we haven't received our award letter from the state on what they'll actually give us funding for summer learning. But we need to put some estimates in there so that we can spend it before we actually get the budget so that we can spend it without requiring an executive order. So we've worked with the curriculum team to get that budget built. So what you see is we're forecasting additional $3.4 million for summer school program, and this is just for our June program. And so we're offsetting that with expenses associated with that. So we'll see the various expenses set up. They include everything from instruction to transportation to SROs as well. And you see that the expenses exactly match the revenue that we're forecasting. All right, last one, Capital Projects. You're going to see an increase of $8.2 million, primarily driven from our gracious county commission and approval of the resolutions, one for the acquisition of land for Elementary School Number 26, as well as last night was approved for the architecture of Elementary School Number 26, so. And just as a side note, in case you are sitting on the edge of your seat, this will be the last year that we use this school design and any future schools will be rebid out under a new design plan, so. So here you see the $6.4 million for the acquisition of the land and then $1.9 million for the architecture and design fees associated with the new school. So overall revenue increase of $8.2 million. Any questions on the budget amendments?
CNN, thank you so much, sir.
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is 2024-2025 Zoning Update, Dr. Luna.
Yes, I'd like to call Chief Operations Officer Norm Brumblay up to give us an update on the building of Kirkwood as well as our upcoming zoning.
Good evening, Board. It's my honor to be before you tonight to bring some great news. Although with that great news comes a lot of work. And so I'll, I'll provide some updates on that work this evening. So the great news is that the county commissioners approved the design fees for Elementary School Number 26 last night. This process began in December of 2021 in response to decades of growth at an average growth rate of about 670 new students each year. That there's, we've seen approximately 3,000 new students since our last new elementary school opened almost a decade ago. But now we begin a design process to address some of that growth. The design phases, we expect to occur throughout the spring and the summer. We are anticipating the project going to codes for review early fall. And we are hopeful to bid the project in the late fall, which should put us in a position to begin construction around the first of the year. That's the first of next year. We are still anticipating this project going operational in August of 2026. Just a quick note, because I've, I've had this question several times recently. Elementary School Number 26 will be our current prototype elementary school. This will be the sixth prototype that we've built. And board policy requires a 50% discount for prototypical architectural design. Prototype, our prototype has resulted in approximately $4.95 million in savings since we've been using it so far. Why is this important? As of Elementary School Number 26, Montgomery County will now be able to fund design of a new multi-story elementary school realized entirely through cost avoidances of our last six prototypical elementary schools. Once again, some great news. Our next update will be on Kirkwood Elementary School. Kirkwood Elementary School was approved in 2023. At this time, we're approximately 60% complete. We're nearly dried in. We're doing interior and exterior finishes. Mechanical plumbing and electrical work is underway. And we're starting the final stages of our site grading. We are still on target for an August of 2024 opening. This is a $52 million investment with a capacity of 1,056 new students. Our next update will be on the multi-phased rezoning. I call it a multi-phased rezoning because you'll remember when it was approved, it was approved in two phases. We're, we're, we have a unique moment in time with the opening of two new elementary schools within two years located both on the east and the northwest side of our city. So this gives us an opportunity to balance capacities throughout the district. The zoning process that began in August of 2023 and saw public engagement, clear expectations, feedback, consideration of that feedback, revisions based on the public expectations, public hearings, and our formal recommendation had its final approval in January of this year in two phases. The first phase corresponds with the opening of Kirkwood Elementary School. It's the most comprehensive, touching boundaries at schools all across the district. And it includes the conversion of St. Bethlehem into an Early Learning Center and Burke transitioning to an innovative high school model. There were 2,281 students identified as impacted and Phase 1 touched 15 elementary schools. Phase 2, on the second map, will be in effect in 26, 27 with the opening of Elementary School Number 26. It will be more isolated to the northern areas of the county. As boundary shifts specifically for Elementary School Number 26, there are an estimated 1,024 students impacted in only six elementary schools. Since our approval in January, we've been very busy. Of the 2,281 students identified in our analysis, many were not actually impacted due to magnet enrollment, open enrollment, Spanish immersion, virtual school, fit, other categories and other parent choices. A total of 2,098 letters for the first phase of rezoning in 2024 were printed by the Communications Department, stuffed in envelopes, postmarked and sent to home addresses. Our instructional team has been configuring enrollment numbers for next year's open enrollment. HR has been communicating staff adjustments to all schools and have posted positions accordingly. The Transportation Department is updating bus, or has updated the bus routing databases in preparation for next year's bus routing processes. And underpinning all of it has been our Technology Department, making sure that all these things move forward. Our next update, I'll just call efficiencies. So we took the opportunity to strategically realign other services as we prepare for next year. So for example, our Transportation Department still faces challenges managing 316 routes with 247 staff, including in those routes are filling supplementary routes serving 39 private daycare providers. Six are in the St. B and Burke School Zones, which will be reconfigured in 24, 25. So, and eight daycares will be servicing new school zones. So we want to ensure that we maintain compliance with policy TRN A003, if you want to look it up. We don't want to inadvertently shuttle students to out-of-zone locations. So the policy mandates keeping supplementary services within the school zones. So notifications are being sent out for coordination with our daycares. And this will help us also recoup eight school buses that would be servicing out-of-zone schools. And those are actually shown in blue on that map there. So this restores balance and formalizes service expectations with our providers and ensures efficient and effective use of district resources in meeting the needs of our learners and other beneficiaries. Our next update is the 10-year construction plan. So with the approval of design fees for Elementary School Number 26 and our Kirkwood Elementary School progress, district staff along with county officials will keep searching for suitable properties. Student enrollment in the district continues its steady 670 students per year growth, mainly in the northern and northeastern regions of the county. Elementary School Number 26 is planned to open in August of 2026. To accommodate additional growth, Elementary 27 is shown for August of 2028. Looking ahead to 2031, Elementary School Number 28 is planned for Region 4, which is the southern areas of the county. As both the county and the district continue to grow, there are plans for a campus with three schools by the mid 2030s. We will continue collaboration with county commissioners, Regional Planning Commission and the Joint Land Acquisition Committee. Our work is ongoing to prioritize land acquisition for future schools to meet our, our community's continuous growth. So the takeaways of this presentation are, Elementary School Number 26 is now underway. Our multi-phased rezoning is being implemented for Kirkwood's opening. We're implementing these changes as efficiently and effectively as possible. We continue to grow at approximately 670 students per year. And we will continue to work and partner with the county commission and other agencies to address the land and capacity needs associated with our community's growth in the future. That concludes my update.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yeah, I was just curious where we're at with the capacity for bus drivers right now. Do you get those updates from time to time? Just curious about that.
Currently, we're sitting at 81%, which is the highest we've been in. I would hate to say a number of years, but we're making some good progress.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is GO6, expand and support multiple pathways into teaching professions, Dr. Luna.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Director of Federal Programs Lisa Baker and Educator Pipeline Facilitator Tracy Kuhn to present this evening to give you an update on our teacher residency programs.
Good evening. I'm excited to share some information and updates about our teacher residency pathways. Clarkson Montgomery County School System offers multiple pathways into the teaching profession through our teacher residency programs. If you refer to the matrix under the second column, you will see information about our three-year pathway, which is the partnership between Nashville State Community College and Austin Peay State University. We have three different cohorts operating at the same time within this pathway. For example, the elementary-level teacher residency pathway is an elementary cohort serving in their second year of their residency. The elementary teacher residency pathway is a elementary cohort serving in their third year. And the elementary middle teacher residency pathway is a combined elementary and middle residency group serving in their first year. This program is available for application to classified employees, community members and high school seniors. During this three-year pathway, teacher residents are hired as education assistants. They're placed in a school with a mentor teacher while they receive on-the-job teacher competency-based training. At the same time, they are attending university courses after hours and during breaks. For example, with the three-year pathway, these individuals start out at Nashville State Community College in which they receive their associate's degree. They transition to Austin Peay State University to receive their bachelor's degree, teaching certification and licensure. So elementary residents in this pathway receive licensure in K-5 instruction and a special ed interventionist endorsement. Middle school residents in this pathway receive licensure in 6th through 8th, math or science, and a special ed interventionist endorsement. In the third column, you'll see our Lipscomb Middle Teacher Residency Pathway. This is a middle school partnership with Lipscomb University, open to classified employees and community members who hold bachelor's degrees. During the first year, residents in this pathway are assigned in a school as an education assistant with a mentor. This is in a middle school, receiving that on-the-job training while attending courses at Lipscomb University. During the second year, they become teachers of record with a job embedded license while they complete their coursework in licensure. So LMTRs receive middle grades or secondary certification in math or English Language Arts with a possible endorsement in ELL. And our final pathway is our Lipscomb Teacher Residency, which is an elementary partnership with Lipscomb. This is also available to classified employees and community members who hold bachelor's degrees. It works in the same way that the LMTR program works, just in the elementary school setting. And these individuals receive dual licensure in K-5 instruction and special ed intervention. Our team works with multiple partners within our district such as HR, Instruction, Communications, Business Affairs. But we also have multiple external partners such as Austin Peay, State University, Workforce Essentials, Lipscomb University, Nashville State Community College and Tennessee Grow Your Own Center. Without all of the work with all of these partners, this program would not be possible. If you refer to the top of this chart, this shows our three-year pathways. That's our Nashville State and Austin Peay pathways. How many residents are in each pathway at this time? We have a total of 88 residents in the three-year pathways with a 33% diversity rate. If you refer to the bottom half of the chart, you see that we have 22 total Lipscomb residents with an 18% diversity rate. So overall, we have 110 residents serving in our schools with a 31% diversity rate. Now, this is an exciting time and a busy time for our team as we are just wrapping up our interviews and selection process for our new three cohorts starting in the 24, 25 school year. Our applicant pool consists of 25 high school seniors, 66 classified staff members, 66 community members, for a total of 157 applicants. And you may have noticed that our classified staff provides a large amount of applicants in our pool. And this video showcases three current CMCSS teachers who have all come through one of the teacher residency pathways. They were also all classified employees in our district before they became teacher residents. So let's take a look and enjoy.
My journey in education started out in public schools back in Chattanooga, Tennessee, where I grew up. And when I came to Clarksville, I was hired in the cafeteria as a fleet service worker at Richfield Middle School. And from there I came here, transferred to Northeast Elementary School as an educational assistant. After a couple of years being an educational assistant, I was blessed to join the teacher residency program where I achieved my Master's of Education, Structural Practice, to become a certified teacher.
I was a classified staff for five years, first as an office assistant. And I was in the front office. And then I went from there to administrative assistant. I always wanted to work in education. I didn't know if I had to be a teacher. But I think being an office assistant, sometimes you're pulled into classrooms when like we're short staff. And once I got in them, I'm like, oh yeah, this is, this is where I need to be. I did the three-year Austin Peay program where you kind of start from almost the beginning. But I think the biggest thing was that I could complete my degree. And the classes were in the afternoon and being a mom and a wife, like that was extremely attractive. I'm like, oh, so I can actually work and go to school and it be like in my schedule? That was just perfect.
I started with the district in 2014 as a substitute school nurse where I got to go to a lot of different schools across the district and help out where there was a need. And then I got a full-time position in 2015 as a school nurse at Sangio Elementary School.
By going through the teacher residency program, it has changed my life drastically. It's been a total different shift going from classified to certified staff. Being more involved in one-on-one in classroom, being classroom teacher, being able to create lesson plans, be able to be over instructional materials and creating a learning environment for the students in the classroom.
The program was very, very supportive the entire step of the way. Like, they even brought us a notebook to the school because one of our classes required that we needed a composition notebook. So they made sure we had everything that we needed. They made sure they set up times for us to log on and discuss any troubles that we had. They provided us all of our books.
My favorite part about being a teacher is the kids. I mean, every day is different, kids are different every day. They have different attitudes, different behaviors, different learning goals, different learning objectives. And that is part of the ever-changing parameter of being a teacher.
I love my job, I love my kids. And to me, that's the number one most important thing. You know, you think about on the tough days, you look back, what's my why? Why am I here, you know? And now I'm here, first of all, to love these kids and to help educate them and take care of them, no matter what it is, whether it's nursing, whether it's teaching, whether it's just being a friend or someone to say hi to them and help build them up. I just want them to be. I just want them to be proud of themselves. I want them to believe in themselves.
I'm like, yeah, this is where I need to be. It's the most rewarding job I think I've ever had. It's almost not a job, but it is, but it's not, because, you know, I look forward to getting up and coming in here with them.
When I watch that, it makes me smile. I hope it makes you smile, too. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Kuhn.
Good evening. So, as of right now, we have 143 teacher residents that are serving as Clarkson Montgomery County School System teachers. So, they are in the classroom with the teacher of record, and they have their own students. Of these, 30% of these teachers are ethnically diverse. Last year, or the district diversity rate that we have right now is 19%. Of these 143 teachers, 60% of those teachers are serving in an elementary school. As Ms. Baker showed you, we have different pathways. So, some are in middle schools, some are in elementaries. We do have some in high schools as well. 40% of these teachers are serving as middle school or high school teachers, and 19% of these teachers are serving as special education teachers. So, when we get these teachers, we want to keep them, right? So, since 2022, 2023 school year was when our three-year pathway began their teaching career. They were the teacher of record that year. We have retained 98% of those teachers for the three-year residency pathways. So, they are now teaching and continuing to teach for our district. Since 2021, which is our first group that graduated from Lipscomb University, we have 90% of those teachers that are still in teaching positions with our district. Our team observation data shows that the average for all of these teachers that came from the residency are performing at expectations. So, this is the exciting part. We get to help them get a degree, and that is very exciting for us. And we have a lot of ways that we support them as they go through this process. One of those things is university and their academics. Like we said before, they are working full-time. They're working every day, all day, and going to coursework and doing classes in the evenings. This is not always super easy, so we try to provide as many supports as we can. We have a FERPA agreement with Austin Peay and Nashville State University, where we can get into their platforms, where they hold their assignments and their grades. So, we can go through that and support the residents as much as possible. We can get experts from our district to help them with content-specific questions and things they have. I don't know about you, but that statistics course that we all had to take in college, it was a little difficult. So, it's nice that we pull in someone from the district. It's a teacher in our district right now that is an expert in that field, and they help them at least once a week. But it goes even beyond that. Sometimes, they are sending these experts their papers or their essays to read and give constructive feedback. They're asking them questions on emails, or sometimes the experts are open for them to have a one-on-one Zoom with them at a different time. So, that's one of the ways that we really support their academics. We've read essays, given feedback on assignments. We've helped with time management. How do you become a successful college student? We've helped many of them work through all of those problem-solving issues. We also help with teacher competencies. These competencies are in place for our apprenticeship approval, and so these competencies are where mentors, our mentor teachers, give every one of our residents feedback every nine weeks or every quarter. And what we do with that feedback is, we analyze it, and then we provide supports for the mentor teachers, the residents, or any way we see that they need help or assistance. We have quarterly professional developments for the mentor teachers to help them provide actionable feedback. We know by research that giving feedback and actionable feedback is the way that people grow the most in their profession. We track this data, and we support the mentors and the teacher residents in any way needed. As we grow and develop our program, we've been doing this for a few years now, we always want to try to improve on our practices. Anything we do, we want to do it better the next time around. Currently, we're going more in-depth with the competencies, so that we can better define them and create timelines for the mentor teachers and the teacher residents to be able to understand them better and break them down into really doable chunks. We're going to provide professional development throughout for these competencies as well. Professional coaching is another thing that we do. This comes in many ways. Sometimes, it's for the teacher resident. Sometimes, it's for the mentor. We collaborate with everyone in the district for these professional coaching things that we need for the teacher residents. We collaborate with our level directors, our human resources, principals. Everyone that's involved with the TRs is part of that professional coaching. Sometimes, the TRs need a little help with, how do I approach this university? If I have this issue? If I have a financial problem? If I have something like this? We are always working towards trying to help them in any aspect of their life that they need. Sometimes, it's just partnering with local businesses to get basic needs, like clothing and food, that they need as well. Going on to the praxis assessment. Becoming a teacher has two components. You have the degree that you get, but you also have the licensure piece that the state requires. So, in order to do that, we have to help them with these practice praxis assessments as well. I always get tongue-tied with praxis-practice assessments. Have to get that out three times fast. So, we are providing teacher residents with that praxis support before they take the test. So, we're really trying to be more proactive in that. It costs every time they take that test. Every time. If they miss it by one point, the state requires them to take it again. So, we want to be as proactive as possible, give them as many resources and ways that they can pass this assessment the first time. If they don't, then we are supporting them on the back end as well, and trying to get them through that hurdle and through that barrier. As you can see, professional development has been talked about a lot on this slide, so it is woven throughout all of these components, from the academics to the competencies to professional coaching and to the praxis assessments. This is probably my favorite slide in the whole slide deck. Over 8,000 students have been served by teachers who were teacher residents. That's pretty impressive. I'm going to invite Lisa Baker back up here for any questions you might have.
I have one question. I saw where there was some, there was a 90% and an 85% rate, attention rate. Was those that came into the program and didn't make it through the classes at the college, or they had gotten into the teaching profession?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part of your question.
Those, the percentage that actually left the district after they were drafted in to go to school, to actually become teachers, I think that's what you were talking about. Those that 5% and that 10% that didn't make it, were they in college, or were they teachers?
They were teaching at that time. These were actually individuals who are eligible to teach, and after that, say, first or second year of teaching, we are measuring if they stayed on as a teacher the next year or not. So, if we, let me go back. Sorry. Sorry about that. Okay. So, last year, excuse me, our third year, our three-year pathway, we had our first group complete the program and become teachers, so that they were teachers for their first year. At the end of the year, starting their second year, we still had 98% of those teachers who chose to stay in the teaching profession. Same way with Lipscomb. Some of them had up to two years of teaching. So, we're looking to see, we want them to keep teaching, and we want to measure if they leave, what percentage they're leaving, and who all is staying. I don't know if that's answering your question.
I asked the question because I was under the impression that the district helped pay for some of their tuition, and they had a obligation to stay.
Okay. So, I understand now. So, they do have an agreement. Three-year residents, they sign on to agree to teach three years minimum in the school district. Our Lipscomb residents agree to teach two years in the district. So, if they do leave before they meet that obligation, they do have to reimburse the district at a prorated amount.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Margaret, Mrs. Pace?
I have two questions. And first of all, that is such a fabulous program, and I know it keeps getting better every year, and I know it's being used as a national model. You said you had 110 residents in this three-year program?
At this time, yes. We have five different cohorts going on at a time every year. And so, with our three-year pathways, we have those three different cohorts that I shared with you. Then we have one Lipscomb middle cohort and one Lipscomb elementary cohort. So, there are 110 total right now.
And this is sort of related to his question. If someone has to drop out of the program, like health problems or military reassignment, do you have a process where it can be filled by another student, or does it have to be in?
It depends on the timing of when that happens. So, sometimes, if it doesn't happen early on, we don't always have that opportunity to fill someone in there, because it is a very fast-paced program. We might have a situation where in a three-year pathway, someone may already have classes they started taking and have credits, and Mike could join in during that first year. We have had that happen before. It really depends on at what point of their residency are they.
And the last question, what is the cost of the praxis test?
That varies by praxis assessments, but it can be up to anywhere from $65 to $150, depending on the assessment. Our elementary teacher residents have to take six praxis assessments, actually five for their K-5 licensure, and then if they want special ed endorsement, the special ed praxis. Our middle school residents have to take the content area praxis. So, it's very expensive, especially for those who are in the elementary pathways.
You need to do your homework, then, don't you?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Griffey?
A couple of questions. Another, and the screen's gone, but Lipscomb offered, was it a master's degree? I think the video answered it. It wasn't mentioned in the presentation. What is the difference in that program over the other one that offers the masters in the same amount of time?
So, with the Lipscomb program, this is for individuals who already have a bachelor's degree. So, they can get their teaching license in a shorter amount of time than those who need to get their bachelor's degree. So, they have offered the incentive of getting the master's degree, because with the master's degree, teachers have that under the belt, they get paid more, and the program offers them the additional option to teach, like with the elementary one, both dual licensure in K-5 and special ed. So, that additional coursework toward the master's degree gives them additional licensure.
You had data on the percentage rate of those that stay with us after they have completed it and are eligible and become teachers. Do you have any data of the percentage rate of the enrollees that do not make it to the end of the course? Those that either finish the course and can't pass a practice, or those that drop out of the course after a year and a half into it, because they realize it's not for them?
I don't have that exact information with me, but we can follow up with you with that.
Okay. And the third one was a tag on to somebody else's question. You mentioned after three years, if they dropped out, that they were, would be paying back part of the tuition. If a year and a half or a year into it, we decide that we don't need to keep them as a teacher, are we obligated for that three-year period? Or is there a payback that comes in that if they're not successful in the classroom?
And if we come to that point where we do choose to release, we have to decide, are we going to seek reimbursement or not? So, that's something that we haven't gotten into just yet, but that is something we would think about if that did happen.
Thank you, and I agree. It is a wonderful program. I totally agree with Ms. Pace, and I'm really proud that we have it in our system. That's all.
Mr. Mayberry?
I echo the sentiment there with the rest of the board, that this is an excellent program, and you did a great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wrote down questions throughout the entire thing. You kept answering them before I could get to this point. But I am curious, you said you have 157 applicants now. What's the total that we accept in these programs? And what's the scalability of the program over time?
And so, at this point, we, for our cohorts next year, we can select up to 40 in our elementary three-year pathway, up to 20 in our Lipscomb teacher residency pathway, the elementary one, and we can accept up to 20 for our Lipscomb middle teacher pathway. So, it could possibly be 80. It will more likely be closer to 70. We typically do not have as many for our middle Lipscomb program. And at this time, I think that we continue to watch and work with, communicate with HR, see what is the need in terms of positions that need to be filled. So, is that something we would watch over time to see how this continues at the scale that it is now?
Okay. So, you feel like the colleges would have the ability, then, to scale this if we choose to in the future?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with the rest of them, that you did a great presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Berry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think this is a wonderful program. It certainly beats the program we came through, where you had to do six weeks of this and six weeks of that, and you didn't have time to work, so you were broke. And so, I just think it's a wonderful program. I wished I could have done my teaching and been mentored, as opposed to the way it used to be. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you. We love the work.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is proposed resolution. Dr. Luna?
I believe Ms. Berry had a resolution that she wanted to propose for the board that is included in your board packet.
Thank you, Dr. Luna. Yes, I proposed a resolution, and tonight, we'll just let you know that it's in your packet, and all explanations will be made later. If you would just look at your copy and the next formal meeting, after you look at it and study it, then we will have discussion and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is CMCS Naming Schools Policy Review. Dr. Luna?
Yes, I believe Mark Nolan is going to introduce this one.
Okay, Board. As you know, last week, we, the board did not approve the recommended or suggested name. So, there had been a question about what is the procedure going forward, and so I wanted to address that. I spent a little time looking through and making sure. There had been a comment or a question about, do we have to modify any existing policies? And so, the answer is no, that this board has the authority and by its own rules and directives under GP3 to approve the naming of facilities and properties. Period. There's no limitation placed on you as the board. You will handle this process as you would anything else. At the next board meeting, there will be suggested names by one or more of you, and then you all will have the opportunity to discuss the merits or benefits of why you thought that name should be appropriate, and eventually, you will come to a vote. And that vote will be, you know, as we always do, vote by majority in Robert's Rules of Order. So, I mean, that's kind of the short version. By way of history, I think the comment was about the policy, there's an administrative policy that really goes back to give the director some guide rails when they were suggesting names of schools. And so, even within that policy, it could be named after somebody. The policy certainly suggests that you look at, as Dr. Luna Vetter had indicated when she gave us the name, you look at geographic historic names. If there was a school that was previously in that area, or that name has a geographic area, and those are some things that are suggested in the policy. But the policy also did go and say that, it was not a prohibition that it couldn't be named after an individual. I mean, there's, you know, and there's suggestions about when you name it after an individual. You know, it'd need to be somebody that was in the community, had a history of major positive accomplishments or exemplary service. Even though that's not a limitation on you, you can pick anybody, but that is just kind of a good guideline. But as far as the process going forward, you all will come up with your own list of names for the school, and you will vote and pick the name of the school. So, are there any questions about that? Okay.
Thank you, sir. County Commissioners' comments? Yes, sir?
Just one quick comment, since we heard this from Mr. Nolan. I would suggest a name. One of those would be a personal friend of mine, Pastor Jimmy Terry Senior, that you consider his name as a possible elementary school.
Thank you for your recommendation. Anyone else? Board, do you have any comments? You know, Dr. Luna? Dr. Luna? Other business?
Good evening, board members. Students, faculty, and staff members returned this week from spring break. The longer days and sunshine this week, combined with the break, seem to have rejuvenated everyone to finish strong as we enter the last quarter of school. This evening, you heard about our continued work of building strong teacher pipelines through the Grow Your Own initiative and teacher apprenticeships. We truly believe this model provides more hands-on experience to produce and retain quality educators, while also increasing diversity in classrooms. I'm optimistic, in the coming months, we will be able to share more of how we plan to expand this work to build strong administrator pipelines for our district as well with local university partners. Last week, we received exciting news from Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation, that operates with support from the Country Music Association Foundation. They will be donating over one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars' worth of musical instruments to seven of our schools. Kenwood Middle, New Providence Middle, West Creek Middle, Montgomery Central High, Northeast High, Northwest High, and West Creek High. We are looking forward to receiving this generous donation soon. Also want to acknowledge a thank you to county commissioners for your continued partnership to support our students. And on a final note, I would like to recognize two teams that I know will be coming soon for Points of Pride, to recognize those that admitted to the state basketball tournament in Murfreesboro. Clarksville High girls team competed last week, and I'm looking forward to watching the Rossview High School boys team, who will begin tournament play tomorrow. Mr. Garland, this concludes my remarks for the evening.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.